Call the meeting to order at six thirty. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Cuts Scout Pat one ninety-one. If you guys want to come up here to.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thanks, guys. Good job. If you guys want, if you guys do want to go. You want to hear a bunch of boring grown-up stuff?
All right. Go play Ro- go play Roblox or something more fun, okay? All right. Have fun trick-or-treating. Bye. All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pierce.
I'm present. I was unmuting.
Trustee Mason. Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Luthard.
Here.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Dominia. And Mayor Gardner.
Here. We have two trustees. Standing remotely, we have Trustee Pierce, who looks in the Blair Witch Project, and then we have Trustee Dominia, who's joining us by phone, so. Welcome to them. First item on the agenda is approval of the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. The whole meeting as presented. Motion is second. Motion Trustee Peterson. Second Trustee Berman. Roll call, please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luthard.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominia.
Epstein.
Five voting yes, zero no, one abstaining. Minutes are approved. So we have a couple acknowledgements tonight. First acknowledgement, I would like to acknowledge Cedric Johnson, who is here this evening. And while you stand up, sir. Cedric was very kind to be a member of the Parks Board since two thousand nine, so. Twelve years on the Parks Board, probably many Parks meetings. And this year, he said he was done his time and he was going to step down from the board, and we appreciate his service to the community and all the meetings and all that you've done for us. So again, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge you. Thank you. Couple sad notes. We had two three people, several people pass away in the last week that we want to acknowledge. One recently was Dr. Donald Skidmore, who was the superintendent of District Thirty-four, I believe, for many years. That lead all the United Methodist Church across the street, was a member of the Redevelopment Committee, and also former Mayor Ray Toft also passed away last week. He was the mayor two turn, two different times for a total of sixteen years, I believe. Nineteen sixty-five to nineteen seventy-three, and again nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-nine. We want to send our condolences to those two individuals. And personally, from the board, also to the family of Robert Cannablie, who also passed away recently unexpectedly. So on to the board meeting. Citizens wishing to address the board, the committee of the whole meeting, whether you're on Zoom or in person, we will also have public comment during the board meeting when we get to that portion. Hopefully at seven o'clock, but maybe a little bit afterwards. Do you want to speak during the, this meeting or the board meeting? All right, we'll get you out of here. All right, come on, come on up over here to the microphone and state your name and. Oh.
I put it on there.
Terry, okay.
So I am Terry Klobnak. I am our Activities Director at Antioch Community High School. And I wanted to come here tonight just to thank our village and everything, kind of put some things together. Our high school celebrated its homecoming from October to, October eleventh through the fifteenth. And looking back on last year, we missed a lot of really what was important to our school and our community. And we had a couple of different things. Our Thursday night festivities are just an amazing community event, and those things were not able to happen last year. So as we got back into the different things and as my role as an Activity Director, I kind of became the one to say, hey, let's pull everybody together and have these things happen. We also wanted to start brainstorming as we knew our homecoming dance wasn't something that we could happen in the gym, as it has in the past. So we wanted to see what could happen. A district personnel said, hey, let's start looking at different places outside of the community, outside of the high school in our community. And we wanted to just say. That's fine. A little fuzzy, but. So we started and the conversation happened, and actually Mayor said, hey, why not let's use Williams Park? And it was an unbelievable event. So being down at the band show on Thursday night and watching our police, fire trucks and everybody light it off at six forty-five, the streets were lined with so many kids collecting so much candy. It was just an event that we haven't been able to have for a long time. And realizing this is something that we couldn't pull off with all of you in this room, we wouldn't be able to have these things that happen. And then on Saturday night, we tried something that we weren't sure how we were going to pull it off. But with the police, the village, everybody, electrician Jim pulling down there to work with our DJ, every single day going to the pavilion to make sure our police knew what was going to happen, our supervisors knew what was able to happen. We had nine hundred and twenty-nine students attend that event on Saturday night on October sixteenth. So we like to say something at the high school. And really, we have one town, one community, one high school that really came together to be able to pull it off. So I can't thank you guys enough. I will be reaching out to the police, the fire, the village, the Public Works Department for all their work, and Mayor and trustees, for everybody to come and thank you guys during our You Make a Difference Breakfast on November eleventh. So we'd love for you to join us kind of on our school grounds and thank all of you again in front of everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom, Jim? That raise their hand or anything? No? Okay. All right, next item, first item on the regular business is a request for a tattoo license application from Black Chapel Tattoo. I know the applicant is here. Is there any questions? I know she's dying to get up here to talk. But again, any of these applications have to come before the board. So with that, I don't know, trustees just want to go around and ask questions or discuss this, but may be called up here to answer some questions. You might as well come up here and be ready. All right. Trustee Pierce, do you have any questions or discussions regarding this application?
No, I do want to say that I noticed on there, there is a question about the autoclave versus disposable. In our business, in the business I'm in, we use, we used to use all reusable electrodes and reusable needles for the EMG portion of it. And everything was reusable and cleaned up and autoclaved and soaked in bleach. And they went through all sorts of stuff to keep those electrodes clean. With the advent of COVID, our disposable business has gone up tremendously because disposables are where it's at now because of the cleanliness and COVID. So if it's an issue of she's going to use only autoclave, I mean, versus disposable, I think for sanitation-wise, we should let her use the disposables because that's what, what is healthy these days. That's the only comment I have.
Thank you, Trustee Mason.
Okay, tattoos, I got no problem. But before I got on the board, there was a coffee shop that came in. Badass Coffee.
Excuse me, Trustee Mason, could you speak into the microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I have to speak into the microphone. Turn your sound back.
No, you're not, Trustee Mason.
I am speaking. Is that better? All right.
That's better. Thank you.
Before I got on the board, there was a coffee shop that came in. You're called Badass Coffee. The board turned down. The name Black Chapel versus White Chapel, being A to Z, being in the Christian town of Antioch within the Bible, Black Chapel kind of is a, kind of a devil name in all sense. And being in our downtown district, the devil next to the oldest church in Antioch, I get the, like, not a problem with the tattoo, just a problem with the name. If that's going to go up there, the people coming to our downtown district and everybody sees Black Chapel, I don't think that fits the mood of our downtown business district that we're trying to reinvent their image to, you know, instead of it being White Chapel Tattoo, you know, not trying to make up your, your branding, but Black Chapel, you know, is, is kind of a dark, dark, dark name for a town that's within the, within the Bible. I couldn't support this just with that name. I support a tattoo shop, but I can't support that name. Just like, because it wouldn't be fair that former board before I got, that took Badass Coffee, which asses carry coffee up the mountains. So it's just, it's just the name of the, it just, I don't think that name fits in our downtown area.
I would be willing to change the name. The way that I came up with the name originally was because I particularly work with black and gray. It's my favorite way to work. My workspace is where I'm most creative. It's my happy place, and that's where I'm able to bring joy to my clients, constantly in Black Chapel, because it is my holy place. However, if that is an issue, I'd be willing to change the name.
And I've seen some beautiful tattoos. It's just, I just think, and it's not me thinking this, I ran it through a bunch of people. And I said the name and what they thought, and they thought the same thing.
Understandable.
Trustee Peterson.
I, I don't have any issue with the name. That's my comment.
Trustee Luthard, I have no comments on it at all.
I have no comment.
Trustee Berman, no comment. Trustee Dominia.
I'm fine with it, and I agree with Trustee Pierce that disposables are better, and I have no problem with the name. Never heard that reference before.
Any other discussion? If not, I would ask for approval from the board to move this to the next regular business meeting for approval.
I'm fine with that.
All right, no objections, so we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Lake County Convention and Visitor Bureau update. Jim Keim will, Administrator Keim will start the discussion, and there are two members here. I believe Maureen is here to present. John, behind the, behind the pole, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, tonight with us is Maureen Reedy and John McGuire with the Lake County Visitor and Convention Bureau, known as Visit Lake County. We're participants, longtime participants. And I happen to sit on the board, and before me, Dustin Milson sat on the board. So we are community partners, have been for a long time, and I thought it would be good for Maureen and John to come and tell you about what Visit Lake County does and what Antioch gets out of it, so you have an understanding of why we're participants and what we can do to make this organization better. So with that, I'll start the presentation, and Maureen and John will take it from here.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you, and thanks for allowing us a few minutes to just give you, we'll just give you a very quick overview on what your longstanding marketing partnership has been with our, our organization. So let's see if Jim can get us a full view there. We're the destination marketing organization for Lake County, so we, we provide promotional opportunities, marketing, business development. It's a, it's a regional organization. Okay, we can go on to the next slide there.
Scott, Mary, can you see the presentation? Oh, Mary, I'm muted.
I can see it.
Okay, thank you.
Just going to go over some of the quick, the marketing strategies we use to really, to, to really elevate the images and branding of Antioch here, so. Let me start with, again, so we're the destination marketing organization for all of Lake County. We're the official tourism organization for the county. We're a public-private organization. We're fortunate to receive some funding through a state tourism grant. And then that has to be matched through local sources such as our community partners and our business partners. And we've got a number of hotels, attractions, restaurants that are also partners with us. So, and as Jim mentioned, he's been on our board for a number of years now. And I think he enjoys it. So during the pandemic, like everybody else, we really had to shift our, our model and our marketing and really speak to residents and, and focus on residents. We're also keeping in mind visitors and making sure that they were inspired as soon as they were ready to travel and come back to Lake County. So we really began to leverage a lot of our social media and, and speak to residents more and, and launched a number of initiatives, and I'm just going to give you a quick overview of some of them. But one of the things that we really did was change kind of some of the information on our website and really talk about what was open and take-out opportunities and, you know, just all the things that we're changing with businesses during the pandemic. And social media was just such an outlet for us to really speak to residents and visitors. And, and we know that residents and visitors both go to our website for events. It's the number one thing that people are going to our website for, so. We try to get all of the events throughout Lake County loaded onto our website with information available, so it's kind of a one-shop stop source for residents and visitors. And we track everything we do, so we actually had a hundred, ninety-seven events in Antioch on our website last year. You had some virtual events, and then you had a lot of outdoor events going on as well, so. Everything that came up in Antioch that we thought would be of interest to visitors and residents who want to move around the county too and, and see what there is to do throughout Lake County, we put that information on our website, so. Ninety-seven different events. We also have a section on boating, so boating Lake County. And there's a lot of information on water recreational opportunities, and there's maps of the chain, chain of lakes on there, and the marinas in Antioch are all listed on there as well. So again, another, another point of exposure for your village. There we go. And we also have a visitor's guide that we printed actually during the pandemic. We went to, kind of scaled it back to a smaller guide, but had a nice map of Lake County. People still love maps. They want to look at maps and see how they can get around the county. But Antioch was, had a big president, presence in the guide and had a full-page ad too that we designed in office. To it, I think it was a really nice representation of Antioch there. Then on to digital marketing. As I mentioned, we've got a really robust presence on social media through Facebook and Twitter and Instagram and YouTube. And we track everything we do, so we actually had a hundred and fifty-one social media mentions for businesses and events in Antioch. That's a pretty impressive number of, of mentions for Antioch. Again, great exposure and a, just, um, just a couple of samples up here of some different mentions of things going on in Antioch. Then on to blogs. We write two or three blogs. People love blogs. They want to, they want more information. They want to get a little bit insight on what's going on in Lake County, so we write a number of blogs. And again, we went back and looked at how many blogs actually mentioned Antioch events and businesses. Yeah, it was a big number, a hundred and seven blogs that, that mentioned things going on in Antioch. So that gets people really thinking about coming to Antioch for all the different activities to do here. There we go. Wanted to mention Restaurant Rally too, and some of the things we did to help support restaurants during the pandemic. We actually held two, what we called Lake County Restaurant Rallies, to, to really shine the spotlight on restaurants, get residents thinking about getting out, trying new eateries across the county, really tapping into that sense of community pride, just again, encouraging people to get out and about. So that was, we held two Lake County Restaurant Rallies during the pandemic. And then we also had, had shifted the timeframe for our typical annual Lake County Restaurant Week. We typically do that in the spring when it's a little bit slower time period. We moved that to May when everything started opening up again. You remember that time period, and people started feeling more comfortable eating outside and getting around and out and about. So we held a Lake County Restaurant Week during that time period, which is a great event. Again, we had sixty-five restaurants participate from twenty-one communities. A couple here in Antioch, always looking for more restaurants to participate, and John McGuire, who's with me, spearheads that initiative for us. So he'll be looking for restaurants in Antioch to participate in that next year's event. This gives you an idea of some of the things we did during Restaurant Week. And one of the cool things was to have these Facebook Live sessions. And we had personalities from WXLC and Will Rock going around and doing actually live sessions at some of the restaurants that were participating. And one of those was done at The Lodge, which was kind of cool. It actually had a lot of views. Seventeen hundred live views. That's, that's, that's pretty good exposure. And again, it might be one restaurant in Antioch, but it gets people thinking about dining in Antioch too, so I think it's great exposure for the whole community. In addition to that, we also have an initiative called Lake County Libation Trail. So this showcases craft breweries, wineries, and distilleries. Of course, you've got, you know, the winery here in, in Antioch, and they're part of this libation trail. So again, they might be, even if some of these attractions are just outside of the village proper area, they bring people out and about and get them thinking about Antioch too and put that top of mind. So that's, that, we're doing another check-in challenge in November through a, what you call almost like a mobile app to get people moving around and trying different libation trail partners throughout Lake County. We're lucky, we have nearly thirty craft breweries, wineries, and distilleries in the county, so. And you know how popular those are. When we travel, a lot of us like to go and, and try out the craft breweries in, in different areas. It just, it just, it's kind of a sense of, it gives you a sense of community when you go to some of those small businesses, and people really enjoy that. On to the summer campaign. So we really wanted to capitalize the fact that once, once the, you know, warmer weather came, that people really wanted to start getting out. But maybe they felt more comfortable taking a road trip rather than getting on an airplane. So we wanted people to start thinking about coming to Lake County, and, you know, even if you're only from the city of Chicago, this seems like such a nice getaway, you know, I'm going to go out to Lake County, it's so beautiful, and there's all these wide-open spaces and, you know, the chain of lakes and a lot of things to do. So we really wanted to promote Lake County as a, as a road trip destination. So we created this campaign. We were very fortunate to get some funding through Lake County's federal, at that time, it was the CARES program, so the federal COVID relief money. We were able to get some money from the county to help support the hospitality market, which is you, as you well know, was decimated during the pandemic. So this was a chance to kind of, you know, provide a lift and start encouraging people to get out more. So we have, we developed this Lake County Road Trips with a landing page on our website, a whole campaign with a lot of media, even some, some TV, some radio, a lot of social media. We even had a billboard. But there was a series of itineraries we developed, again, get people thinking about how they can move around the county through all the major roads. And one of those roadways is eighty-three, and so we developed some really nice itineraries, and one of them has some great stops in Antioch to get people just thinking about, hey, doesn't that sound, that sounds kind of fun, just hop in the car and, and get away on a road trip for a couple of days. And, and mention some of the highlights in Antioch as part of that itinerary. We did a beautiful insert in the Chicago Tribune. We printed eighty thousand copies of this piece, which John's going to hand out for you to see, but it was just an insert that you could pull out, and again, it just kind of inspired you to think about getting out and experiencing Lake County during the summer. So Antioch was highlighted and spotlighted in that insert because obviously you have a lot of beautiful water and water recreation, and people think a lot about water during the summer, so we wanted to inspire the people to come to Lake County during the summer, so we'll give you a, a sample copy of that afterwards. So now we're into fall, and we're doing a campaign called Spooks and Spirits. So spooks, all the haunted things and Halloween things and spirits, sort of a double meaning there with also the libation trail partners. So that's going on right now, and just highlighting some of the things here going on in Antioch during the fall time period. We have a landing page, so, and when we do a social media campaign, we link to that landing page, take people into that landing page, and then they can start moving around and seeing all the activities, events, and things they can do in that Lake County during the fall time period. Of course, we have a lot of great outdoor events, a lot of activities during the fall time period. And then we'll be doing a holiday campaign as well, that Antioch is going to participate in that too. Again, people, getting people out to holiday attractions and also thinking about shopping and dining experiences during the holidays. So when I, so when we think about the group tour market, one of the things I wanted to mention to you, because I think it's, it's really interesting, is that one of the first markets that started to come back during COVID was actually group tours. So these are people traveling by motorcoaches, and a lot of them are seniors, so it's kind of interesting that they were ready, they wanted to get out. And so one of the things we did is a, what we call a familiarization tour, our client event, where we brought clients into the Lake County area to show them some of the things they could do if they wanted to bring tour groups back. And the reason I bring this up is because we brought the group to Antioch, and they had four stops in Antioch. They went to Tulip Time, Richardson Farms in April, and then they came to Antioch and went through four different stops here in Antioch. We were very surprised that we had seventeen companies, twenty-two tour operators wanted to come in April. You remember, everything was just kind of changing during that time, but in April, and so great exposure for Antioch and those stops, and hopefully they'll bring back more business. The other thing we're doing is we're planning another one now in December that's also going to have some stops in Antioch, because you have some great holiday activities here. So again, we, we bring these tour operators here, and then they go back and promote group tours, and they might bring twenty or thirty people back to Antioch. Maybe they'll have lunch here, they'll go to Love and Oven for sure, and do some other things in the area too, so it, it makes for a really nice itinerary. And finally, what's next? A lot of work on social media continues. I mentioned the fall campaign. Of course, we're promoting Uncover Antioch Scavenger Hunt that just started. That sounds like a really interesting event, and so we want to certainly help get the word out about that. We've got a photo contest that's ending at the end of this month, so still encouraging people to get in their best photos of Lake County. And I mentioned the libation trail check-in, and then Holiday Your Way will be the theme for the holiday. So I'll just leave you with, I don't have to tell you how important tourism is. You know how important it is to the economy of Antioch. And, you know, we're certainly here to help support you, help market your events and activities, and really work closely with your other agencies and the branding that you've been doing. I know you, you've done a lot of work in that area, and I know Visit Lake County is mentioned several times in your, your marketing plans in terms of how we can support your efforts to really amplify your messaging and your branding and. your efforts to really amplify your messaging and your branding and the place making and all the other initiatives that you've that you're you're working on recently. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to work sort of in tandem with what you're doing here in town. And our scope is larger. We have a very much of a regional and broader reach. And and we're, we're promoting all of Lake County, but that that gives everybody here and all the communities we work with an opportunity to, I think there's power, there's, there's power in the partnership and collaboration. So everyone gets an opportunity to kind of elevate their messaging and their branding for the communities with an overall umbrella of branding all of Lake County. And what a great destination this is. So thank you very much for your time. And I'm sure certainly happy to answer any questions. And John is here as well, our staff.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the board members, staff? All right. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. And then we'll leave you with, and then the insert I mentioned. And thank you for coming to our lunch. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your time and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is, again, Administrator Kim, we have HR Green giving an update on the Grim Road project. So we'll welcome Tim Hartnett and his team.
So yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have HR Green representatives, you have Akram Chadri, Jeff Strzokka and Tim Hartnett. And I thought at this point it'd be beneficial to update the board on the Grim Road engineering activities and where we've been and where we're going and some funding that we have identified that may be interesting to you. Our point that we need to get up on screen. There's a different one. It's the green one in the middle of the A. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our engineering team to give you an update on what's happening with Grim Road.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could see a face for the name, that'll look grayer, but I'm Tim Hartnett with HR Green. Been very blessed and honored to serve, be serving Antioch since 2001 uninterrupted as one of your engineering consultant teams. So again, as Jim stated, we wanted to give you a quick update since 2020, what we've been accomplishing during Phase One, and Jeff Strzokka will do that. We'll also give you a look ahead into '22. And we also feel there's a nice opportunity, as Jim stated, to obtain some grants and funding from a variety of different agencies. And the time is now, we're at a crossroads to make that decision. It adds a little bit of time to the project, but we also have some ideas to get something moving in '22 and '23 until we secure that funding. So just real quick, just as a friendly reminder, the project is Route 83 is on the left of the screen. And 173 by the car dealerships is up at the top of the screen. And so what we propose to do is create this realignment of Grim Road. Old Grim Road has since been shut down a few years. It has not been in use from the railroad right away all the way through to 173. So I just wanted to share this exhibit. We can always come back to it. But more importantly, I'd like to get Jeff up here, who's our project manager, and just give you that update. Again, only here to take five, 10 minutes, but we'd really like at the end of this to get your concurrence to continue to move forward with grants and funding. And we can continue to work with Jim and Dennis and the staff. With that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Tim. Hello, everyone. I'm Jeff Strzokka, as Tim had mentioned. The Grim Road Project is important. The Grim Road Project is important. It's going to alleviate congestion at 173 and 83. It is also going to improve safety. We had that unconventional skewed intersection with Grim Road at 173 that exists today. With the realignment, it's going to be at a 90 degree angle with 173. And we've worked with IDOT over the years to get that intersection in place and approved. The project also, you know, helps the pavement condition as well as alleviate some flooding issues on the existing Grim Road. And also equally importantly, it would spur some economic development along Grim Road and parcels owned by the village. To date, we are closing in on the condition of design engineering. We are beginning right away acquisition needed to build the project. We're also obtaining permit clearances. And this timeline shown be shown up here is subject to funding availability, right away acquisition and project readiness. And we are, we can, as Tim had mentioned, we can start construction here in 2022. Like I mentioned, we're looking for right away from Coonas Lord, the Lake County Forest deserve at their Seaport Creek property body craft as well. We've been coordinated on an ongoing basis with IDOT. We have a substantial amount of work on both 83 and 173. There's going to be a new right turn lane on 83 onto Grim Road as well as a new right turn lane on 173 onto Grim and a new left turn lane onto Grim Road from 173. We continue coordination with the railroad as well as ICC for the railroad crossing at Grim Road. And just recently, we met with the Lake County Forest last Friday for coordination on their easement and right away. Engineering is about 75% complete. In 2022, we have the potential to put out a mass grading and utilities bid package from east of the railroad tracks to 173. That would have a summer or a fall construction start. And then in '23, we would follow up with the turn lane construction, the curbs, the paving, the street lighting, multi-use path. It's my understanding Grim Road is going to be funded with local village dollars. The cost for this work is approximately $5 million. We have the opportunity to secure approximately 80% of those dollars, so $4 million potentially through federal government and the state. To do that, we are going to need to assign Grim Road as a federal aid route and also prepare a Phase One engineering report meeting IDOT and FHWA requirement. If we do that, and once we have the approvals of those items, that opens up Grim Road to a multitude of different funding options that you see up here on the screen. So a drawback for obtaining these fundings is that it will push the schedule approximately 18 to 24 months. But you do have that potentially up to $4 million that you'd be able to assign to the Grim Road project that would not be paid for from the village. We believe that Grim Road has a lot of attractive elements to it that would score well for these selection committee meetings. Nothing's guaranteed, but that is a kind of where we're at with the project. And cognizance of your time, you know, we can open up for questions or, you know, if you want to find out more about the project.
We also have Akram Chadri here, who's been working with the village since 2001. He handles a lot of our motor fuel packs. He is also what we call at the office, the guru of grants and funding. And he not only has relationships at IDOT in Schaumburg District One, but also down in Springfield. So a lot of the grant availability is based on our transportation team's expertise and experience, which we have won grant money for the village of Antioch in the year to come. And so with that, we open up the questions. Again, we respect the time. So we're happy to answer.
Thank you for the presentation. Trustee Pierce, do you have any questions?
I'd just like to take the opportunity to tell Mr. Hartnett I've enjoyed working with them. He's always done a top notch job and I've worked with them since 2001 also. So he's done a great job. And I also want to take the opportunity, I noticed there's a multi, multi-use path in here. I'd like Mr. Hartnett in his fertile mind start running around up thoughts about where other multi-use paths could go, because we got to work on those also. But so far, good job.
Thank you. Trustee Mason. Trustee Peterson.
I have no comments.
Trustee Boothard.
No comment.
Trustee Berman.
No comment.
Trustee Dominik.
I want to thank you for the update. I think it's terrific. And I think we should think about how to communicate this to our residents. It may not be this entire presentation, but I think the timeline and why the timeline is being built the way it is would be very helpful, because people do question what's happening with Grim Road. And this is a great opportunity with all this great work to share what's going on and why. So I would recommend that we think about how to do that, but to get it out onto the public. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Obviously, we don't need formal approval, but here's some of the board's comments that go, continue the path that we're on.
Okay. And I just, you know, as far as the grant funding, I would agree, you know, that it is worthwhile to spend the time to get these dollars so that we can spend the dollars that we might have had to spend on this on other projects. And a little bit later tonight, we'll talk more about grants and funding. So there, there are multiple, obviously multiple grant sources, and also there will be Village Match. We will be spending some money on this and there's options for that as well. So as this project moves on, together we'll decide what the funding cocktail really is here. But to the extent we can get these grants, you know, and if we show progress to the public, you know, hopefully it won't be something that you're having to answer for. As I know, social media, you know, sometimes people want to understand what's happening here. So we're going to do our best to kind of let them know what's happening and what's coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you guys. All right. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Garrigan, a discussion regarding a text amendment to the Form Based Code restricting offices, personal services on Main Street. So this is the presentation to the board.
Thank you, Your Honor. This matter comes before you for proposed tax amendment as it relates to the village's form base code. As you know, we adopted the Form Based Code in 2001. There has been some discussion of respect to concerns by existing businesses about the proliferation of offices and services. And based on that fact, we propose a tax amendment restricting, the proposal is specifically to restrict offices and services to no more than 28%. 28% comes from existing uses, which constitutes, there's currently 34 businesses on Main Street. Currently, 28% of those are offices and services. So for the record, we are not prohibiting, again, we are not prohibiting services and offices on Main Street. Anybody who currently exists would be considered legally non-conforming. But the proposal is to restrict them to no more, to exceed no more than 28%. The basis of this was expressed concerns over the past, actually, since I've been here by a number of businesses with regards to proliferation of offices on Main Street. Perspective is that offices and personal services, in many cases, suppress street life. We all know that obviously restaurants and retail are generally incorporate in vibrant downtown generally typically based on best practices, based on my 20 plus years of experience, based on my certification as Congress of New Urbanism. The Premier Design Association United States. Clearly, retail and restaurants promote street life. So based on that, we proposed a, an amendment to the Form Based Code. This matter did go before the Plan Commission. For the record, there was a lack of support. The vote was five to four to three with respect to not supporting this proposed tax amendment. So we are bringing this matter for discussion this evening of whether there is support and consideration for a proposed tax amendment as relates to, again, restricting offices to and personal services to no more than 28% on Main Street. Again, for the record, this is a one block area between Orchard and Lake. We are not restricting offices and personal services on Top Street, Balance of Lake Street, Orchard Street, those areas will continue to be open right now. So we're really looking for your discussion, a healthy discussion this evening of what your perspective is and what you believe makes a vibrant downtown and how to encourage additional street life, which will be conducive to attract more businesses, specifically retail and restaurants downtown Antioch. That I'll conclude my staff report. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Trustee Pierce, any questions?
Mr. Garrigan, I want to be clear. Was it just a lack of support on the on the planning zoning, or did they vote to deny this this amendment change?
They voted to deny. There was, again, a split vote, four to three. There are some concerns about, or no better way to say, I think property rights was the main concern. And whether it was putting undue hardship on existing building owners. So there was a, you know, this, this matter went to the Plan Commission or I think two different hearings. There was a very frank and healthy discussion, a lot of discussion. We had, you know, members of the business community on both sides. We had building owners on both sides to issue. So it was a very vibrant and healthy discussion that they had. But again, by a vote of, I believe my recollection is four, four to three, they did not support the proposed tax amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Mr. Vasselli, since it was a four to three vote to deny, we do not need a super majority to override them. They would have had to deny it by a unanimous vote, correct?
That you are at the right ends, but there are different means. The super majority vote coming to a, the Board of the Corporate Authorities is only regarding a special use permit. This was a text amendment. And as such, the super majority rule that stems from the Illinois Municipal Code does not apply. So you're right in the ends, but the means are different. It does not have to do with the the super, whatever level of voting that comes on in the recommending body of the planning and zoning board.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because I had questions on that today. I will, I'll be frank and honest with my opinion. I do not believe that is the village's position or right to deny property owners of what they feel is the best use of their property through this type of zoning. If we are improving their zoning, then that may be an issue. But several property owners feel like they're, they're, we are not improving, we are, we are diminishing. So I don't think that we should be choosing form codes, zoning code, or any form of code to diminish somebody's perceived rights. I do think the village should work very hard and very actively to find ways to incentivize the type of businesses we want to open within that area through whether we're, we're doing increased grants, whether we're doing incentive programs, or whether we're doing something to the effect of paying rent for, for a short time period to bring in the type of businesses we want. But I, I would have to vote no on, on this, this change. And I would also encourage the board, if they decide to vote yes, to, to incorporate the recommended percentage value that is currently in existence, which I think is, as Mr. Garrigan said, was 28%. So that, that's, that's my input.
Thank you, Trustee Pierce. Trustee Mason.
You know where I stand. I'm against this 100%. You know, you're taking people's property rights away and say, I only can sell it to this class of people, basically redlining. Redlining your downtown district. Basically telling the service people, they got to go out town, outside town to do business. We should do it by capitalism, make our downtown vibrant. People want to come here to do business. And if it wasn't dilapidated, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have cheap office space. That's the reason people come down and take office space in a downtown area. So you, you got to make your downtown area So you you got to make your downtown area, which which we've been working hard getting, you know, our our programs together with different restaurants coming in to make our downtown area to make it. You know, the buildings you're going to sell for more money for a better downtown where it doesn't make sense for an office to go there. It's too expensive. So I I I could never support an issue like this. Just it 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 doesn't make sense. If if the the vault restaurant wouldn't wouldn't go back to a bank, they couldn't. Makes no sense. It was a bank hundred years ago and it switched switched owners five times. Doesn't make sense. I could never support this.
Thank you, Trustee Peterson.
I I am in favor of this. Um, we are trying very hard to get foot traffic downtown. There are service offices uh in the downtown right now and if under this twenty-eight percent, they can stay. Um, they'll be grandfathered in. Um, I don't think that this is a bad idea. What what we really need to do is encourage business, uh retail business and restaurants. Uh, we need foot traffic. That was perfectly shown to us on Saturday. When if you have the businesses downtown that will attract people, they will come. We can't always have service. You know, I a a tax person is great. You know, uh, an accountant is wonderful, but I see mine once a year. You know, I they do a lot of business, but they don't bring foot traffic downtown. We can't, we're not saying they can't come to any. We're just saying just not on Main Street. Uh, but there is one on Main Street, so you know, he'd stay. There's no problem here. We are not kicking anybody out. We're not telling them they can't, they can't stay. We're just saying we want to encourage restaurants and retail to bring the foot traffic downtown to get this downtown vibrant. We're giving grants, we're improving the buildings. We hired the Lakota Group to come in and give us a hand. Uh, we we are going to see some big changes in this downtown in the next two couple of years, and it's going to be big. And doing this is going to help that happen. So I am in full support of this. That's all I have to say.
Trustee Boothard.
Question on if a owner or renter wanted to exceed the twenty-eight percent, is there a way for that owner to come to the village and request permission for some type of establishment to open? I mean, or is that basically, once you're at twenty-eight percent, you're done?
Now, typically, any 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 zoning application has the right to ask relief from the village. So any, as you know, any code that we have in the zoning ordinance, if applicant has the right to come before the board and ask relief from that regulation, whether that's through a variance or potentially through a actual use P U D, there are different ways to do that. But by definition, there there is a forum for relief, but it does have to come before the village, Plan Commission, Village Board. It's not automatic.
So the so the procedure would be they would have to go before the planning and zoning, ask for a variance on this.
Correct.
Written wording.
That's correct.
And then in turn, that would go before the village board. There would be a way for someone to get something approved if they were beyond the twenty-eight percent.
That's correct. But it would have to be, again, approved by the
There is a procedure in place for that. Yeah, because I mean, I this is one of those issues that I've I've gone back and forth on a million times and I see the benefit of it tremendously and I but I also want to make sure that our building owners and renters can do what they need to do with their property. I don't want to see a piece of property sitting there vacant because they can't get a establishment or something in there. And and when they have someone that's willing to pay them rent after so long, I just want to make sure they have the ability to come to the village and say, listen, we tried getting these types of establishments in here. We can't. We have someone in in the office out here. And go through the procedures to do it. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Trustee Berman.
I was going to ask the same thing about whether we, you know.
Trustee Berman, could you speak up, please?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Um, you know, as long as there's some wiggle room and it gives people an option still.
It's not a hard cap.
Trustee Domeniac.
I I am fully in support of this. I think that when you look at the data that Michael has presented to us in the past, that there are many towns that are very vibrant, that have this type of a capacity for non-retail, non-restaurant businesses in their downtown districts. Um, we're talking about a block, maybe a block and a half, I guess. I'm not sure how you'd really define their length. But um I know from all my time that I spend with the business owners that are in those retail, et cetera, um that this is one of their primary concerns. And as I'm listening, I'm thinking about a time I was sitting outside at at uh Oliveri and a couple that and you may not have um met them, but they built the White House across from the State Bank of the Lakes on uh on the side street there. I always get those confused, Victoria or whatever. And uh we were talking and she said, there's nothing going on in this town. And our goal is to make the Antioch a destination. I'm puzzled by the comments that we're trying to impact someone's property rights. We have zoning ordinances in place for a lot of things. We restrict different businesses to different parts of town. We don't allow a strip club to be on Main Street. We don't allow other types of businesses on Main Street. So I'm really struggling with the concept that a building owner's property rights are being restricted because we want to put in some capacity controls around businesses that don't drive our goal and our vision. And to Trustee Peterson's comment, we basically have spent a lot of money on marketing and Lakota to improve downtown. So why would we not want to codify that vision? I think the other thing I struggle with is that I'm having worked with Michael as long as I have and been really focused on on working with the building owners to improve their appearances. There are many building owners that refuse to spend the money. And so we're where's their commitment to Antioch? I guess I really struggle with that. So I'm in full support of this because I believe in supporting the businesses that are on Main Street. I believe in the vision that we have for making Antioch a destination, and I don't believe that we are severely impacting someone's business property rights by amending the zoning codes. I'm fully in support of this.
Thank you. Let me, yeah, what um the board considers will go around one more time.
I'd like one more.
So um, you want to start with Scott and then go down the line and one more time on this so we can hear some follow-up? Trustee Pierce?
I have I have no further comments, but I think I was pretty clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm just going to make a follow-up. This is this is probably more of a Republican follow-up. You've got a business at twenty-eight percent. We looked at what what happens with the sign variances, with people get denied. And you have a business that says, geez, I gotta, I gotta rent my business out. I I I'm losing money. And and I can't get anybody in there to to do it because we're at maximum twenty-eight percent. And they went in front of the board. They said, no, I can't rent the business out. I I'm going to lose my building because no one wants to rent it because the board turned me down. That's that's the problem. You're 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 making an incentive when the board sits there and says, no, that business can't go in there. No, it can't happen. And that building owner, who's picked on Geld and Electric, that building owner can't can't sit there and say, I can't find it because we're at max capacity. And the board said, no, they can't get anybody to put a retail shop or anything in there, and he can't pay his mortgage. Therefore, then he loses his building. That's the problem. You should make it vibrant and not allow the board to decide that person lost that building by losing a mortgage and losing rent. That's why I would vote no on it.
Thank you, Trustee Peterson.
Um, I've made my point where I'm in full support of this. And this is moving forward, looking toward the future for Antioch. And we spent, like Trustee Domeniac said, we spent a lot of money already in trying to improve the downtown, and this is just one more step. So I'm in support of this.
Trustee Boothard, any follow-up?
Michael, do you have any stats on neighboring communities, on which ones have similar restrictions or which ones do or do not?
I I did prepare a matrix, and if I apologize, I don't have that. I know that was distributed to the Village Board. Just for the record, there are no adjacent communities that are, when I say adjacent, um, I mean Lindenhurst, Fox Lake, Lakeville, Lindenhurst, adjacent communities that have this policy. But it's also, to be fair, they don't have particularly vibrant downtowns. If you look at some other communities, they are in that matrix, there are some regulations. I think I gave a couple of examples of some North Shore communities and Barrington. Now, you can make a demographic argument for comparing apples and oranges. Um, but for the record, those are pretty vibrant downtowns.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Bourbon?
We don't have any other comments.
Trustee Domeniac?
Yeah, I just want to add um to that comment um about the different types of communities that have put these things in place. Um, I had the uh opportunity a couple of years ago to attend the National Main Street Conference. And um this was something that was discussed at that conference, and we saw examples, and I don't know, remember them off the top of my head, but a variety of different communities, both wealthy and those that are more middle income and even some that have lower income that have implemented these these ordinances to um try to drive downtown growth. And again, I just want to reiterate that I'm here to represent the residents and um the residents want a vibrant downtown. We spent a lot of money um to to try and get to that objective. We have all sorts of plans and projects and grants in place to to move that forward. And uh I would like to see us make this decision, put it forward, and uh move on to some of the other things that are going to make us a destination.
Thank you. And um I would uh ask for consent from the board to move this to the regular board meeting for final discussion, public comments, and a vote on this proposal. Unless there's any objection, we will just the meeting in two weeks. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is ARPA funding update, which I believe uh Data, Joy, Jim, whoever else is, thank you. This uh just for um people listening on Zoom or on YouTube later, this is regarding the American Rescue Plan Act uh funds that were um dedicated and received by the Village of Antioch.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the left side of the sheet, um lists out eligible uses uh for the American Rescue Plan Act, as its name is ARPA. And I'll go over there, go over the very briefly. Um, number one is the support public health expenditures. For example, funding COVID-nineteen mitigation efforts, uh medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and certain public health and safety issues. Um, I I will say this would be very difficult, if not impossible, for staff as it is currently made up to develop programs to distribute funds in this manner. We we do not have social services available. Um, it's not our primary, you know, line of business or function here. So I'm not recommending that we go down the number one aisle. Number two is uh address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. I think there's been some conversation about how we could potentially do this. But but I I guess if if there were, you know, I kind of put it with number one, it would be very difficult for staff that's currently made up to come up with a program um to equitably distribute funds, you know, to those that have had economic harm or households that have had had harm. We've already done some small business um grants to try to help those impacted. Um, I think it was a successful program um or other impacted industries. Um, you know, this one, again, for a village the size to develop programs to distribute funds in that fashion. You know, we certainly need a lot of help with that. I'm not recommending we go down that path either. Um, number three is to replace lost public sector revenues. You know, luckily, many, most, vast majority of our businesses stayed intact during COVID. We did not see those businesses close down. Um, just having a conversation about vibrant Main Street, uh and I hope we'll become more vibrant, but you know, replacing public sector loss. Um, we're lucky, our our finances held. We we did some budget corrections, but I think we took a very conservative approach, not knowing the unknowns uh going into COVID and what revenue hits we would have. Um, but we came out the other side. And we we really don't have a lot of revenue loss to support, certainly not. And we're talking about magnitude of one point nine million dollars, you know, funding that will come in two tranches. One, distribution, I think we've received, Joy, and the next distribution is coming next July. Number four, provide premium pay for essential workers. I don't know how that would work either. You know, who who are we going to say is essential? And are we going to going to start, you know, I I guess the staff would be all for it if you if you wanted to label us essential and pay us more money for the work we've already done. But again, we've come out the other side of that. I I don't I don't see that as necessarily the option you want to look at. But I think number five is what we should focus on. Because you have projects and you have needs in this community that focus on, you know, and and what number five is invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure and and to make it clear that would be water supply, you can invest in it, improve your water supply system. You could invest in your wastewater collection and treatment systems. And you could um invest in stormwater projects. Or you could invest this money in making broadband internet more accessible in the community. I would love to find a way to make broadband accessible, but I think you're talking about something that costs a lot more than one point nine million dollars. I think you're talking about, it's hard to say, you know, what what it would be. I hate to throw a number out there, but I think you're talking dozens of millions of dollars to to make you know, broadband internet available. It's the it's known as the fifth utility now. It's the internet is is as important to people as water and sewer and and their utility, electric and gas. I think that's something we should look into in the future, but I don't think we're ready to go. And these funds have to be spent by twenty-four, or encumbered by twenty-four. So I I'm going to recommend now we we kind of focus on the right side of the sheet. And for Trustee Domeniac and Trustee Pierce, I did email this to you before the meeting. I'm sorry if you're not seeing what I'm talking about. I'll certainly spend some time and show it to you.
We, I have what you sent, a one-page sheet?
I've got it too. I've seen it.
All right, thank you. Um, so then staff tried to identify, you know, what makes sense? What projects do we have that would qualify for this funding legally? And we have a Crest Lane project. We we designed a Crest Lane replacement sanitary sewer um that was having problems with uh capacity, and it's ready to bid. Um, it was listed in the capital bill a couple of years ago as being funded. Um, so we are in line for a six hundred thousand dollar and the project was estimated at six hundred, at least it was two years ago. So I have a source of funding there. You know, I'm being told that's viable funding. COVID set it back a bit, but it is funding that you, I think, are going to get. I don't think it's if, it's when. We're we're going to be eligible for that. So I I I guess it would be an eligible project. I I I think we're able to survive and wait to see if the other funding comes comes to be. It would be a shame, I think, to waste a six hundred thousand dollar funding source. We talked about Grim Road earlier. Grim Road will be a complete street with water and sewer facilities and stormwater facilities. You could offset Grim Road costs. Um, at least, not the roadway costs, but the other costs related to these water infrastructure uh with this money. That that would be a valid expenditure. You know, water and sewer is doing pretty good. It's our enterprise fund. Um, it's carrying a balance. You know, we do have another source, but it it's a viable option. And then finally, I I've listed the corner of Depot and Main Street, which we probably been one of the most talked about projects and and we've endeavored to get concepts and we're very close to being able to present to the board a final concept of what could happen there. That's a flood mitigation project. That's a project that's important to the community. That's a project that's important to the community. That project needs funding as well. There is no other source for flood mitigation or stormwater that you currently have. So whatever, you know, whatever we're lucky enough to receive via the grant money we're getting through SMC via DCEO, we're going to have to match that with a big chunk of Village General Fund or funds we would receive on a bond issue. But I've said it maybe to a couple of you already, you know, it seems to be a slam dunk. If you need to spend this on a stormwater or water project, and you have a very large project getting queued up across the street that we have not identified where all the money's coming from yet, you could, you could take that 1.9 and apply that. It would qualify as a match to our stormwater grant. And it could, you know, essentially make that project across the street. You know, it's been estimated between $5 and $7 million with 2.7 coming from stormwater and then this 1.9. You're almost talking about $5 million that you're getting from other sources, not your general fund. I personally, you know, I'm very happy to queue up these projects, get them designed, get them engineered, get them permitted. But I always like to know where that money's coming from, so we're not wasting our time spinning our wheels, working on projects, and then trying to figure out funding later. So I'm going to recommend to this board to use the ARPA funds for the project that's kitty-corner to this building, which is the corner of Depot and Main Street, opening up that creek, mitigating the flood problems that it's presented, and proceeding that.
Thank you. Discussion, Trustee Pierce?
I would concur with using it for finishing, getting started across the street. I do have concerns about Crest Lane. We have people's homes that have been flooded in the past because of the undersized sanitary system over there. Is there any way we can work our sources down in, down in Springfield to push that $600,000 through? They've been waiting for us to resolve that for many, many years. So Crest Lane can't be forgotten because people's lives are being impacted by it. But at the same time, if we've got money coming for that, we should use that money. Because if we, if we apply this money to Crest Lane, then we lose the $600,000 for Crest Lane. And I think, I think the whole town would be behind getting Depot Park or whatever you want to call it done sooner than later. So I would support using it for this, that use.
Trustee Mason?
Basically, you're taking one, rather than Peter Pay Paul, which one's more important? We sat here and discussed their downtown. That's probably on the top of the line of getting a reward for spending the money. I agree with Trustee Pierce. Crest Lane's been talked about, and that has caused some damage to the property. That's got to be, that's got to be a top priority. Because that's homeowners damage. So they both got to be done at the same time.
All right, thank you. Trustee Peterson?
I agree with that. I absolutely agree. Crest Lane and corner of Depot and Main.
Thank you. Trustee Bluthard?
Obviously need to get more information, but the corner of Depot and Main would be the second.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Berman?
I agree. First and third.
All right. Trustee Domeniac? Oh, you're unmuted.
Trustee Berman, could you repeat what you said? I couldn't hear you.
I said the first and the third on the right-hand column.
Thank you. My comments on this are a little bit different. I certainly agree with what everybody's saying, but.
Hold on, Mary. Hold that thought for a second. You were breaking up for a second. Hold on, Mary.
It's not 1.0.
Hold on, Mary. Your phone's glitching. Can you hear us?
I'm not on my phone.
Okay, hold on.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Now he can. Yep, don't move. Stay right there.
The amount is 1.
Hey, Mary, yeah, turn off your video and just do audio that may help with the connection. How about now? All right, well. As we wait for the, she's probably logged back on. So I'm hearing minus one so far that there's a consensus to move along as planned for items, item number three, but not forgetting about item number one and pushing the state to get the $600,000 to us so that it's not delayed. And if it's not forthcoming, that we figure out a plan to figure out Crest Lane as well. That makes sense. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the consensus. And Mary back yet? All right, hold on.
Hear me?
Yep, just don't turn the camera on. We're good.
Okay, well, so the amount is 1.9, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you said we spend it by one?
It has to be obligated, maybe not spent entirely, but obligated by 24, sometime in 24.
So here's how I'm thinking about this. I mean, I certainly agree with Crest, with Depot and Main. But the first point is one that I really, interesting when I looked at it and I connect it to, hear me okay? Can you hear me?
Now we can. Yes, yes.
So the first point caught my eye. I connected it to the report that we got from the police chief. And in that report, he speaks to the mental health issues that our officers are having to deal with out in the field. I know when we were going through the budget process, that Trustee Pierce had suggested that we look at funding some type of social work support for our officers. I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense, in fact, I think it makes sense, for us to take a piece of that 1.9, it wouldn't be a big piece of it, and fund someone to help support that effort. It would be covered on this plan, and I think it's something to consider.
Okay, so.
Even if it was $50, $75. And then when we look at it, when we go through the budget, you know, a permanent position. But I think that, you know, with everything that we've been hearing about mental health issues across the country and the impact it's having on law enforcement, I don't want to speak for the chief, but it seems to me that that would be money well spent, and it would be covered by this plan.
All right, thank you. And I'll have things to speak with Jeff, you know, after the meeting too as well. While they walk through this. All right, thank you. And I think the last item on the cow is the Finance Department restructuring. Data will give us the first update, I think.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, everyone. I was given direction by the administrator, trying to give you an update on the restructuring of the Finance Department. As you know, we're doing real close to Joy leaving us. So I'm trying to pick her brain as much as I can and get information from her on understanding the technical part, the technical part of the Finance Department and the assessment of what the need is and her challenges. I have to commend her on being the only accountant in the department and fulfilling the role that the department requires. So kudos to her. But I wanted to draw attention at things that so far in the three weeks have come to a concern to me. One is the vulnerability of the Finance Department, who is not cross-trained, where if you have something happen to one of the staff members, we do not have the backup for that. And that in my career has been an issue, and is something that I immediately assess to protect the department and make sure there's no disruption in the operation. I also understand that the current contractors that we have, Ladderback and Amon, they are auditors and they're doing contracting services, and there's nothing wrong with them doing that. But there is a conflict of interest. I am concerned with the perception of the conflict of interest with them auditing their own work that we do. So I prepared a spreadsheet for you and a memo showing you that I've discussed it with the administrator, and Joy and I have had deep conversations regarding how we can set a plan right before she departs that we know will work for us and that it will have no financial impact to the budget. With that going into a position that pays less than an assistant finance director, bringing in a consultant company that does the same work as Ladderback and Amon does, that there's no conflict of interest, that is independent in checking and preparing for an audit. They don't check, which is very important to me. And to come in and just help with the things that are redundant and things that are a deeper level along with me. And I will take on some of the responsibilities that were listed in the contract with Ladderback and Amon as the Director of Finance, which are things that are like annual responsibilities. Allowing me to hire somebody at a lesser pay, a senior accountant, that will fulfill those tedious tasks in the department, have the accounting background, be the backup to accounts payable, and be the backup to the utility billing, allowing us to have a plan in place and to move forward. As you know, I have the background to do the job. But the technical part in any industry you go to is different. So right now, I've taken the time to assess the challenges, the changes that will work well for us without coming in and asking for more funds to cover the expense. So I was asked by the administrator to provide you an update today and let you know. Our plan is, we already gave, we already spoke to the other firm, getting some numbers together. And we hope to have a contract in the next board meeting so we could speak.
All right, thank you. Trustee Pierce, any questions or comments?
No questions, Your Honor. Just waiting to see it on paper.
All right, thank you. Trustee Mason? Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluthard? No question. Trustee Berman?
No question.
Trustee Domeniac?
No questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other business in this long cow meeting? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Motion, Trustee Peterson, second, Trustee Bluthard. Meeting is adjourned at, oh, sorry. Yeah, well, I'll just.
Hi.
May second, Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero no, meeting adjourned. Five minutes, five minutes. Sorry, guys. So you want to do five-minute break, or we'll go back. How long's the regular one? How long's the regular one? Not that one. Thank you. One is, the other has got some issues. Kind of espresso. Ooh. Oh, see? How you pay? Doing what? Why? I'm still, I'm at the office. Where's at the office? I had to get the dog a haircut. That's not working. Carried the dog in, like, wouldn't find the collar. Just say, yeah. Ed said, that would be funny. Ed said. That actually, that actually be funny. Ed said.
It's like two seconds. Better like lotion.
He's out.
I don't remember that next time. Yeah, especially. I'd rather be.
I'm back. Did you all miss me? Out here in the Blair Witchlands.
Waiting for that werewolf to come from behind you.
I got stuck in traffic. Been better to pull over.
Oh.
I should be, be in the playoffs. I'll get it on way, way down.
I'll get it on way, way down. Oh, everything's gone.
I call the meeting to order. Um, roll call please.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Luther.
Here.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Dominiac.
Here.
Mayor Gardner.
Present. We have two trustees attending via Zoom. Um, nothing on the mayoral report today. Um, any citizens wishing to address the board? Uh, if you are on Zoom and wish to address the board, please raise your hand. Um, I'm going to continue to move along to the uh next item and if somebody raised their hand, Jim will alert me. Um, next item is the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Any um requests for removal of any of those items? Alright, if not, I'd entertain a motion and a second to um.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second, motion by trustee Pierce, second by trustee Boothard. Um, roll call please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Abstain.
Five uh voting yes, zero no, one abstain, motion carries. Next, uh, now we're on to the regular business items. Uh, the first is consideration and approval of accounts payable as prepared by staff. And the amount of.
I can make a motion to approve the accounts payable amount of four hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion trustee Peterson, do I have a second? Second. Second trustee uh Boothard, um, any discussion? Not roll call please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason. Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of an ordinance. Approving the issuance of a class J BYOB licensed Antioch Fine Arts Foundation. Ordinance number twenty-one dash ten dash thirty-seven. I'd entertain a motion waving the second reading in a second please. Alright, so we also, we have a motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Dominiac waving the second reading. Any discussion regarding this item? Alright, there's no discussion. We'll take a roll call please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance adding one more class A and A1. Restaurant liquor license for station fifty-one. Truck company bar and grill Inc. To be located at eight eighty-three North Main Street. Ordinance number twenty-one dash ten dash thirty-eight. I'd entertain a motion in a second. Waving.
So moved, waving the second reading.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have, we get the Zoom people this time. We have Mary Dominiac uh with the um. Motion waving the second reading and a second by uh trustee um Scott Pierce. Any discussion regarding this item?
Um.
Oh, go ahead Scott.
This is for the attorney. Do we normally require them to have their occupancy permit before we issue the liquor license?
Yes.
Uh, they don't have that yet, do they?
This is, this is granted, well, this is grant additional license. It's just grants additional license. They'll need their occupancy permit before they start business, but. So if your question is. The nature of this ordinance is to grant the additional license for this business to operate. They are not getting their op, their. License up until they have op, operate uh the certificate for occupancy, excuse me.
Okay, um, I, I was just gonna say, I, I think we did the same thing for the rivalry. And it, and it makes sense to start this movement at this point so they can. Get their stuff in line with the state and everything.
Perfect. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, roll call please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Alright, consideration and approval of a resolution approving the site plan for Clubland's clubhouse at the corner of Savage Road. And White Lake Drive, resolution number twenty-one dash seventy-five. Remove.
Second.
Motion by trustee Boothard, second by trustee Peterson. Um. Mr. Gergen is going to present for us.
Yes, very briefly thinking, your honor. This is a, a site plan review for the clubhouse clubhouse. This matter, as you recall, when the overall club lands development was approved, there was a clubhouse. That was proposed as part of the master plan development. Unfortunately, that clubhouse was never developed because of Newman Holmes bankruptcy. Um, but the current developer has been working with the homeowners association over the past number of years. Uh, so on this matter, difficultly for the planning commission, the planning commission did. A support to propose clubhouse on directing your attention to the screen very briefly. The applicant proposing approximately ten thousand square foot um clubhouse uh at the corner of Savage Road. Um, and, and White Lake Drive, um, the applicant has complied with all the requirements of the village's site plan review ordinance as relates to parking. As always, the architecture, um, architecture applied with the ordinance. As regards, it's being proposed to incorporate the minimum uh actually quality materials. So the architecture. It will be actually a very nice building, uh, and it should be a nice complement to the club lands development. Guards and landscape plan, the applicants complied with the village's ordinance. Um, same with the four metric and stormwater. So with um, with that, um, the planning commission did recommend unanimous approval of this clubhouse. We do have representatives from the association. Uh, here, there are any questions as it relates to the board's clubhouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any questions or discussion? Trustee Pierce.
Um, since this is for Clublands and it's being developed under, in cooperation with Clublands. I'd really like to hear from their board members how they feel about. If they're satisfied.
We uh, for the record, just. Yeah, my name is Dave Nolan. I'm the president of the Clubland HWA board. Um, we've been working with uh, with the developer on this project for a number of years. We've worked together with them on the design of the building, the facilities, uh, the use cases for the building. Um, uh, as well as um, working with independent contractors for the uh, for, for the swimming areas and the deck and. Everything, every step of the way we've been working with uh, with the developer on this project. Um, we're very content with the design. Um, we believe it's very close to what the original design was for the community before. Uh, when the original developer was in. Um, I believe the original building was somewhere in the neighborhood of eleven thousand square feet. This is little over ten thousand. And the original plan had three pools and we do have three aquatic features. So. Uh, by and large, the community is very happy, you know, with uh, with the design. And um, and, and with the project moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions for the president of the association?
None from me.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Uh, trustee basic, any questions or comments?
That's gonna drive their homeowners values up. Yeah, that's good, good.
Trustee Peterson.
No comments.
Trustee Boothard.
No comment.
Trustee Berman.
No.
Trustee Dominiac.
No question, no questions.
Okay, um, there's no more discussion. I'd entertain a um, roll call please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance amending title seven. Chapter three of the municipal code of Antioch establishing vehicle weight limits on several streets. Ordinance number twenty-one dash zero seven dash twenty-four. I entertain a motion and a second waving the second reading.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second.
Second trustee Berman. Discussion, um, or I believe Jim's here to kind of give us a background on this. I know it's been a while since we've discussed this.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Um, this was discussed at a cow sometime over the summer. Um, the attempt here is to modify our ordinances to keep trucks, especially those. Gravel trucks or any, any truck in excess of. Thirteen ton to stay on the local, the, the, the state highways to keep them on fifty-nine, keep them on one seventy-three, keep them on eighty-three. And prevent them from cutting through our local roads, which aren't necessarily built to handle it and it becomes nuisance. To make this enforceable by the police department according to. Weight or the plate. Um, and it, it still allows municipal vehicles to do what they need to do. Uh, around town or to get deliveries. If you need to get a delivery to downtown or to an industrial address, the ordinance does allow for that. So. We're not going to be restricting local traffic that's doing business here. It's really aimed at getting. You know, traffic that's cutting through town and local roads and get them to stay on those state routes. So that's the intent of this ordinance.
Alright, thank you trustee Pierce. Questions or comments?
No questions, your honor.
Thank you trustee uh Mason.
None.
Alright, trustee Peterson.
No questions, Jim.
Trustee Boothard.
None.
Trustee Berman.
No question.
Trustee Dominiac.
I, I do have a question. Um, I brought this request forward because of my concern and the concern of businesses on Lake Street. Um, being expressed to me regarding gravel trucks and other big semis and big vehicles going down Lake Street. And I see here that Lake Street is. Allowing these types of vehicles. So it really kind of defeats the purpose of why I brought it up in the first place. Could you help me to understand why? Lake Street is included as a truck route?
So, so there are many streets that are allowed to be truck routes, but they are, this ordinance effectively bans anything. Over thirteen tons on those truck routes, so.
Right, but this says. Go ahead. Paragraph B speaks to that. Am I frozen again?
No, I think, I think what, I think what you are um saying, Mary, is probably correct. Is it an, if it's an oversight, Lake Street. Yeah.
Paragraph B, there is no, no trucks over thirteen tons. And then paragraph D says operator in excess of the provided for blah, blah, blah shall drive such vehicle only upon the following roads. Which are designated as truck routes and it's got Lake Street on it as X, number ten. The whole point of me bringing this up was because the businesses, you know, Hannah's and Oliveri's and other businesses were concerned about the number of.
I believe you are correct, so I would ask that um, you know, we um. Trustee Peterson and trustee Berman um amend their motions. To um approve the ordinance waving the second reading. Striking Lake Street from paragraph D, article ten of the ordinance.
I'll amend my motion.
Alright, um. amended, motions amended by uh. Peterson, you second that amendment, removing article D, X, ten.
Can I just say that I do second?
Yeah. I don't have any objection from anybody else to that revision, okay? If not, and that was a good catch, thank you. Um, any other discussion regarding this matter?
No, thank you. And we'll be sending up um signage so that people know that they can't go that way, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks for getting this done. I know one more can hold on it.
Alright, we'll strike that and we will take a roll call um on this removing article D. Roman numeral ten.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Um, last item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution appointing Zeta Torres. As village treasurer and Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent Resolution twenty-one dash seventy-six. I need a motion and a second please.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee Boothard. Uh. Jim, you can explain the need for this before there's any discussion. It's, it's really a housekeeping item. We're.
Essentially uh transferring the necessary stations. Uh, to Zeta from Joy. Uh, it's part of our transition. You'll see maybe a couple of more of these things come through for meetings. Um, but essentially it's a housekeeping item to give her proper authorization to do what she needs to do as the incoming finance director.
Thank you. Any dis, any discussion? Alright, if not, uh, roll call please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason. Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the administrator's report.
No report tonight, your honor.
Alright, thank you. Um, village clerk, any report?
I do have a report that the um leaf vacuuming will begin.
Twenty.
Um, next week. It's the first four full weeks of November and it is weather dependent. So if the leaves are wet or heavy, um, the trucks will not be able to come up. I'm also trick or treating will be held on Sunday from three to seven.
Alright, thank you. Um, any trustee reports other than those that were received in writing?
I, I'd like to say something, your honor.
Yes.
Um, as far as the pledge report that we received today for the activity. Um, I want to say number one to the chief. I think he set the standard for the other departments to um, to kind of work towards hi- his report. Um, not that they don't do a good job, but I think the chief uh upped his game a little bit. Um, but I do know that he would like input from all the trustees by email or by phone call. Um, if they would like to see changes in it or if they have any concerns about what was, was in the report. Um, so that's the first thing I want to talk, wanted to say. The second thing is. Just as an FYI, everybody try to save December eleventh on their calendars in the evening. Um, late last week, the Navy base reached out to me and asked me if we could still do a sailors dinner at the VFW. Um, lots of discussions have taken place over the last week. And we're getting, waiting for final confirmation from the Navy base at the eleventh is a go date. And once we have that, we're gonna come out with all sorts of announcement, looking for volunteers and donations and stuff. But I think it'd be very healthy for the village board members to come on out there and, and take a look and see what's going on. Uh, the sailors dinner is a wonderful thing this community does.
Thank you trustee Pierce. Trustee Mason.
I emailed the report. The only thing I forgot to put in there is Swelco. Changed the meeting times at one thirty. And technical difficulties, I was just not able to have next month's meeting canceled already. So. I think, I think, I think they gotta change the meeting times. I think they know, because they're getting a bad attendance on them.
Alright, thank you. Trustee Peterson.
I don't have any.
Trustee Boothard. Move forward. Alright, trustee Berman.
No report.
Trustee Dominiac.
I just want to commend Parks and Recreation for the great weekend festivities with Treat the Street and um Harvest Fest. It was very well attended. And someone did a great job with the weather. So kudos to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, I do not know of any request or need for executive session, so on that note, I'd entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Alright, motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Dominiac, roll call please.
Pierce.
Hi, hi.
Mason.
You got my eye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Six voting yes, zero. Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.